I'd like to call the board. Right there, month meeting of Joliet Junior College District 525 rescheduled from April 8th. Harold, Joan, hello please.
Trustee Broder.
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guillen.
Present.
Trustee Mahalik.
Present.
Student trustee Marin. Trustee Morales. Trustee O'Connell. Trustee Washington.
Present.
And chairman Wonderlick.
Present.
Quorum, chairman.
I'd like to welcome everybody who virtually came to this meeting tonight. At this time, President Mitchell, would you start us? Pledge of allegiance. allegiance to the flag. Now you're safe. We're going to talk to the people who want to say one nation under God, indivisible, and God is the law. Thank you everyone. Next item, 1.0.5 public comments. We have two public comments.
We do, chairman Wonderlick. We received four requests, two with their phone numbers for. And I'm just going to remind everyone, if you can mute your microphone during the meeting and only unmute when you're talking, that would help. So Jim, the first request to address the board was from Elizabeth Hernandez, who would like to address the board regarding the summer 2020 course fees.
I did not see her connected, Dr. Mitchell.
Chairman, would you like me to read her comments or move on to the next?
Move on, it was reverting to summer.
So right, all four pertaining to the summer courses.
Move on to the next one.
Okay. The next one, Jim, is from Olivia Reese.
Yes, I am here.
Okay.
Hello.
I can go ahead and read my comments then?
Yes.
You can.
Thank you. My name is Olivia Reese and I am a current JJC student in this math review program. I wanted to optimize communication with board trustees regarding the fees for the summer 2020 semester. In my opinion, it would be wrong to implement an online course fee for this summer semester to mean that students are forced to continue to school during the crisis by having them paid even more for classes. Should students not be encouraged and supported to continue their education there at this time? The implementation of this fee would be quite discouraging. At a time where in-person classes are not an option being given, while we understand it is for our protection, the students should not be burdened by this compromise. It is most famous that many families in America are struggling financially, and that includes students as well. Just in my school programs, our students have lost their jobs because of COVID-19. There are students who are already paying more money to have Wi-Fi or larger amounts of data available out of the depth of home in order to finish up spring 2020 semester online. Students who are in charge of differential submissions such as their finance and policy are in fact already staying or prefer to attend to a time that would be further weighted down by the online fee. In summary, the students of JJC should not stay online fees or any other course fees that would pertain to in-person classes like class fee when they are no longer allowed into that course in school. It is not our choice if that is to be only offered online, but it is our choice against your education and we should be supported in that position in all possible ways by JJC, including financially. That is all right now, thank you.
Thank you, comments? Any other?
No, there were two other requests, both pertaining to summer 2020 semester, but we have not received a phone number to contact.
And the other person has not joined the call this time.
Okay, moving on. Item 1.1, business reports. Item 1.1.
I would like to call Vice President, Administrative Services, Rob Galick to speak to this first business item.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I have two business reports to meet this evening. The first one deals with agenda item 4.5, which involves the reimbursement of employee expenses for working from home. On January 1st of 2019, the state of Illinois passed the Illinois Wage Payment and Collection Act. That requires employers to reimburse its employees for costs they incur as a result of their employment. And since the middle of March, when the decision was made to close the campus and require employees to work from home, employees are incurring costs associated with their work from home status, specifically a portion of their cellphone usage as well as their home internet cost. You might say, well, we've always had people working from home, particularly faculty at times, why now? And the difference is, in the past, we provided a place to work for all employees and it was their prerogative and their option to work from home, thus not triggering this requirement to reimburse. Given that the campus is closed and employees have no other choice, that's what requires the reimbursement of these work from home expenses. So there's been a lot of conversation amongst the cabinet and a lot of comparing of our plans with other community colleges across the state. And the plan that we're proposing tonight that we're asking for approval is to divide employees into two separate tiers. So tier one involves those employees whose positions, it's physically impossible for them to do their jobs from home. These might be facility service workers or food service workers. However, during our closure, we did require that these employees take some mandatory training, which they're required to do anyway when they're on campus. And many also took some online courses from a professional development standpoint. And so tier one involves those employees who cannot do any work from any of their day jobs, their main positions from home. And we're recommending that we reimburse these employees for $5 bi-weekly, which would appear on individuals' paychecks, and so that's why we chose to nominate, to nominate these things in a bi-weekly fashion. Tier two essentially represents everybody else, whether they have, they can do their entire job from home or a portion of the job from home, that would, those employees would qualify as tier two. Their reimbursement would be $12 bi-weekly. This reimbursement is similar to what most community colleges are doing across the state. And the cost of the entire program would equate to approximately $125,000 per month all in. The last thing I'd like to point out is, because this is not, this is a non-accountable reimbursement plan from the perspective of the IRS, and what that means is that we're not requiring that receipts get submitted or any type of written documentation be submitted. The IRS views this as a non-accountable reimbursement plan and therefore, this would be a taxable income item for the employee. So reimbursements would be subject to income tax withholding for the employee. The last point is because the dollar amounts are so small, there are no 6% rule of concern from a SIR standpoint. And so a recommendation that is part of the agenda tonight, item 4.5, is to appeal the reimbursement as stated.
Thank you. Next item, 1.1.2, summer 2020 course fees.
Right, I'd like to, Mr. Rob Galick, address this request as well.
Item number 4.6 on this evening's agenda is to request the Board of Trustees' approval to waive summer 2020 course fees and online fees. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just explain the rationale for both items. In the case of online fees, which was the topic of Ms. Reese's public statement earlier, the online fees, we typically charge $35 per course for an online fee. So when the decision was made to place all of the summer classes online, registration had already opened for the summer semester. And so we had many students who had signed up for classes under the pretense that they would be taking the class in person. There are some online classes that are also taught in summer and those would have been, under normal conditions, would have been charged a $25 fee. So when the decision was made to teach everything online, we were in a situation where we were kind of changing the rules of the game for students halfway through the, through the registration process. And so it just doesn't feel right to charge students for that online fee when they, their intent and their desire was just to sign up for an in-person class that would not trigger the online fee. And so one option would have been to charge some students the online fee, the ones that were originally online, and then those other students whose classes were switched, not charge them the online fee. That would have put us in a situation where some classes were charged online fees and others were not, even though all classes are being taught online. And so that didn't feel right either. And so the recommendation as a result of this is to simply waive the online fee for the summer 2020 semester only on a non-presidential basis. So that's the online fee piece. The course fee is a different argument, and essentially the course fee, as most of you know, course fees, sometimes the lab fees are intended to be a fee that's charged to the student to reimburse the college or out-of-pocket costs associated with a unique class, a nursing lab, a biology lab, CTE class, with our consumables that are used up in the class. And so the fee would be charged to the students to make, basically make the college whole. These course fees vary by course, and because all classes are being taught online and there's no in-person lab component to any of these summer 2020 classes, it doesn't seem right, again, to charge a student a course fee when they're, they're not enjoying the in-person lab element of the class. And so we're also requesting a waiver of the summer 2020 course fees on a non-presidential basis. When you combine the two, the estimated lost revenue associated with this is $300,000.
All right, thank you, Robert. Next item, 1.1.3, pass/fail grade recommendation.
I would like to ask Dr. Randy Fletcher to address the item of the pass/fail grade option. Dr. Fletcher?
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Board of Trustees. In regards to the pass/fail grade recommendation, as a cabinet and dean's leadership teams, we thoroughly reviewed the joint agency guidance that was produced on April the 9th, where it stated issuing pass/fail grades during the spring 2020 semester as a result of COVID-19. As a college, we weighed the benefits and the associated obstacles in changing our current grading policy to adopt elements of this guidance. Our current policy does not allow for pass/fail grades to be assigned to credit courses. The policy was brought forth through our shared governance system, and that was how it was approved as a policy. The guidance from ICCB, higher ed, and the IAI truly supports institutions that routinely allow pass/fail grades to be awarded for credit courses. And many times, they allow a certain percentage of those courses to be pass/fail in their program study. At JJC, we don't have that. The primary benefit of students is that they can replace their rewarded grade with a P grade or an F grade. And as P grades are only assigned to quality grades A through D, in transfer, these grades typically are already transferred, the A through D quality grade are already accepted by our transfer institutions. And another caveat is that quality grades are the only grades calculated in a student's GPA. A passing grade is not figured into a GPA calculation. So this is a distinct and definite obstacle for students in that if they need quality grades in the spring semester for GPA calculation as they are applying for admission to a transfer institution, or if they're applying for scholarship application, if those grades are only P grades, then they could run the risk of not being qualified for those applications. Joliet Junior College adopted instead a course voucher system to students who felt they were unable to complete online courses due to COVID-19, or that they felt that the grade was in jeopardy as a result of the pandemic. So we felt that this was much more of an appropriate option for our students and that they can use those vouchers to retake those courses at no cost. And also, a pass/fail grade is not allowed for our CTE programs, especially in the health sciences and nursing, as the national accrediting bodies that support those programs of study will not allow for any passing grade to be a part of that and not be able to sit for an exam. So the recommendation from Joliet Junior College, the administration and faculty and staff, is to not to change our current grading policy to allow for pass and fail grades to be allowed for credit-bearing courses.
Thank you, Rob. Next item.
I can entertain you.
When are we allowed to ask questions? Can you hear us?
This is Alicia, I hear you.
Can we ask questions?
Yes.
My question on the grading system, one, is if it is, are we keeping the grade as of March 13th, that it can't get any worse than March 13th? Or are you allowing the grade to be inflated or deflated depending on whatever their grades are, no matter what?
No, we are not, we are moving on with our current evaluation and assessment of student's progress.
So you're not holding anything as of March 13th? So if March 13th they were at a B, and all of a sudden on April 25th they're a D, we're going to allow the D, not keep and maintain the March 13th grade from when the pandemic started?
Correct.
Because the grade schools K through 12 are holding that they cannot do anything worse than what their grade was as of March 13th. So we're not going to follow that as what K through 12 is doing?
That's not a part of the Illinois Community College Board, Board of Higher Education, IAI guidance, no.
This is Sophie Garcia, can you turn it up?
Yes.
Okay. I know that we are going to keep holding on the pass/fail grade conversation, I couldn't see it on the agenda, did I miss this?
No, there is no vote for the pass/fail. Dr. Fletcher was just sharing with the board that we are staying with our current policy. It was more of an update.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So even if we disagree with it, we still are not voting on it. It's up to you guys, correct?
Correct, we're staying with the current board policy.
All right, well, I'm just going to break record to say that I don't agree with that. I think that even though that policy is not in it for higher education, I still think that we should have something status quo from March 13th, as the K through 12 grades are doing.
Right, and trustee Robert, what I can tell you is when you had heard earlier about the students have the option to take a voucher, if they are, if they were currently going through the second half of their semester and they feel their grades are dropping and they're not able to complete at the, at the ability or the level that they were in the first half of the semester, then they have an option to take that voucher, and that voucher is good for one year to retake that course.
Okay, that I was not aware of.
Question?
Yes.
I'm sure we did everything we could to accommodate students so that their grades wouldn't drop as a result of this transition. Am I accurate on that?
Could you say that, could you repeat that?
Sure. Did we do everything within our control to assist students in this transition so that they would not suffer as much of a grade decrease, so their grades wouldn't, would not be negatively affected as much as we could?
Right, you know what, I would like to call Dr. Yolanda Farmer, and she can share with the board some of the activities and the services that have been provided through her division.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. I am having a difficult time hearing everyone, there is an echo, so I just want you to know that. But if I recall your question, trustee Morales, you wanted to know if you did everything we could to support students during this difficult time, specifically related to their academic success, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And I would respond to that absolutely. In fact, we worked in partnership with Academic Affairs to make the decision, you know, if we're going to move forward with pass or fail opportunities for students. As Dr. Fletcher indicated, this would be the best approach for students. However, I want you to know in terms of student support services, we've been very proactive in providing a lot of outreach to our students. In fact, one of the biggest challenges for our students at this time really just has to do with learning the online process and becoming an online learner. So we've been very proactive in providing a lot of virtual one-on-one training for students about becoming an online learner through our tutoring and learning center. We also have our advisors, success coaches, working with students and offering workshops. So we've been very proactive to support students in that.
Thank you, because I know some students are more technologically savvy than others, and I just, if we're seeing some grades going from a B to a D, and they're going to stay with the latter, the D, I just want to know that this transition, if this has something to do with their grades impacting them in a negative way, that we are doing what we can to coach them along.
Oh, absolutely. And I just want to mention one more important initiative. I know that Dr. Fletcher talked about the voucher opportunity for our students, and again, it's, it was important for us to do that outreach with our students and to encourage them to come back, because we recognize that some students may have some difficulties navigating online. So, so we also provided, provided what we call our Chromebook loner program, and that was specifically facilitated through the foundation department. Kristi has been a great partner for the college in general, specifically student development. And we purchased computers for students that we loaned out, you know, for those who may need that additional technology support. You know, we continue to provide, you know, the help desk, I mean, available for students 24/7, so I have to come in gym as well. But again, it was all hands on deck to really support students during this difficult time. You're welcome.
This is trustee Garcia, I can have a question about the course voucher system that you guys mentioned. Will the company, there's only a chance to increase at the beginning when we transition to the online class, people will be able to take advantage of that.
Dr. Farmer or Dr. Fletcher, who would like to address trustee Garcia's question regarding the voucher system when it was announced in the timeframe? Dr. Farmer? Dr. Fletcher? Hello? Dr. Farmer?
I think we're frozen on the main site.
Okay, I can, I can hear everybody now. Yeah, me too.
I can, but I think Bob and Judy are frozen.
I think so as well. I will touch Jim.
Okay. Dr. Farmer, did you hear the question?
I responded to trustee Morales thoroughly.
Right, trustee, trustee Garcia-Guillen asked the question, if you could explain when the vouchers were rolled out, when that communication was shared with students and what that time period was for them to take advantage of them?
Oh, sure, absolutely. So that, the voucher program was rolled out, ooh, I'm trying to think of the date, the second week in April, and actually, actually it was the first week in April, excuse me. And we allowed students a three-year period to apply for the voucher. We, and I will tell you, though we have a deadline, you know, we continue to still work with students. In fact, I met with Jonathan Feint and Cindy Vasquez Barrios, who were very instrumental in supporting the voucher process, and we had over 1,400 students that applied for the voucher, so we continued to engage those students even today.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Farmer.
You're so welcome. And Dr. Mitchell, just to let you know, I didn't hear the question originally because it was frozen. You guys were frozen.
Okay. Okay, thank you though, I appreciate that.
I didn't, I didn't hear it either.
Okay, well, we're doing our best, this is our inaugural virtual meeting, so we'll get through this, thank you.
Okay, moving on to 1.2, moment of silence. I'd like to take a moment of silence for David Fisk, grandfather of Deanna Fisk and financial lady. Edna May, Pinky McFarland, aunt of Jim Serre, IT, Michael Prokop, Prokop, father of Susan Prokop, excuse me, Prokop in library, and Sam Andriano, friend of the city of Joliet. Thank you very much. Item 1.3, recognition of special guests. I guess everybody's a TV star tonight, so you're all special. Next item, 1.4.1, Asian Heritage Month Proclamation. I obviously we have somebody here to read this, so that will be put on for next month.
Well, it is, can we, do you vote? Do you vote?
Yeah, we can vote. I don't think anybody's got to vote against Asian Heritage Month. Would that be out of the Senate, Jim?
No.
No?
Just call for vote.
Call for vote. Joan, Carl?
There needs to be a motion and a second.
We need a motion to accept Asian.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Next item, 1.2, faculty union report. We have a written report from Dr. Marcy. In our packet, item 1.4, ad jump from Laurel Eastco. There is no report. Item 1.5, minutes, approval of the minutes of regular meeting of March 11th. If there's no additions or corrections, a entertaining motion.
Motion.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item 1. says communications, any further communications, Ms. Buck? Item 1.7, approval of the agenda. Entertaining motion for the approval of the agenda.
Aye.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed. Okay, item 1.8, consent agenda.
Yeah.
Yep. Consent agenda. Motion.
We have to approve it first before we pull something, right?
We have to have a motion and a second before we pull something. Yes?
So, Dr.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion or anything? Alicia?
I want, I want 4.5, Paul.
4. 4.5.
7.2.
Trustee Washington?
Yes.
Chairman Wondler?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't forget the student trustee.
Yashonah? Yashonah? Oh, is she? Okay. Trustee Marin? Student trustee Marin?
Trustee Shama, can you hear us?
Oh, you know what? She just dropped off.
Okay. Okay. Item 4.5. At 4.5, do we have a motion?
All in favor?
And a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Discussion.
My question is this. I'm going to ask, here's my question. If we're getting the nominal fees of $5, $12, and all that, I guess I'm concerned that we're nickel-diming when they're not paying for gas to come back and forth to work, why are we doing this? Because I, too, sit-at-home person that's working, not getting reimbursed, why are we doing the reimbursement? What is it for?
And maybe trustee Broderick, this is Carl, I can help answer that question. The reimbursement that's being recommended under 4.5 is pursuant to the Illinois Wage Payment Collection Act. It's not usually triggered because as Vice President Gallagher said, it's an option to work from home. But we reviewed the statute, we reviewed the guidance from the Attorney General's Office, and it is to be provided. So technically speaking, to answer your question, if you're being required to work from home during this time period and there isn't an office available for you, you should be being reimbursed for that portion of your expense as well. So the assessment that was done for those fees to be paid, or those costs to be paid to the employees, was pursuant to that statutory obligation that the college has.
Okay. Well, then that's understandable because in my position, we were not, we were not aware of that. So I appreciate that update for me, too, to go back to my employer.
Yeah, it's not just public employers, it's all employers.
Thank you.
So there's a motion and a second? Also, a second. Any further discussion? If not, Carl, take a roll, please. Trustee Mahalik? Trustee Mahalik?
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes. Sorry. I had you guys on mute.
Trustee Washington?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, again?
Yes.
Trustee Marin?
If it's something we legally have to do, I'm going to support it, but I also kind of feel like how trustee Broderick says, people are still being paid, nobody's been sent to collect unemployment, their salaries, their benefits are intact, a lot of people have lost jobs because of this, and I just feel like it's a wash, but at the end, yes, I'm going to support it.
Okay, thank you. And chairman Wondler?
Yes.
I'm sorry, trustee O'Connell, excuse me, I apologize. Did he jump back on? He's not on. Okay. Motion passes. Okay. We have the first reading of board policies, second reading, board policies.
But that was new business.
New business.
New business, old business.
New business, old business. Okay.
Question I have, and I brought this to Dr. Mitchell's attention. Due to the fact that most of the people are having issues with employment, federal taxes have deferred until July 15th, Kane County, Kendall County, for the real estate first installment of taxes are doing 60 and 90 days out without any, without any penalties. I'm asking if we, because I've talked to some of our Will County board members, if we are going to approach them, if we have the ability to say that we'd like to see a deferment, even, I mean, they still can make the payments, but without penalties up until a certain period of time, I think we should mirror Kendall or mirror Kane because they are doing the same thing. Because if the federal and the state level can do it, why can't the county level do it? People are having a hard time making that warrant.
I can, I can respond a little bit, Maureen. Preacher Tim Roffey was on the radio yesterday. The bills are going out Monday, the first. The payments are still going to be made in the same timeframe as, as before, but according to Mr. Roffey, there's a possibility that if you apply or call or whoever you got in touch to, they can waive any late fees or interest penalties because of them.
Well, one, one comment I'm going to make, on Tuesday, May 5th, the Finance Committee from the county, the Will County Board is meeting. This is on their agenda. I was told that we should be speaking to our county board members to make sure they're aware that we are okay with that being done, that we want to see them not, not getting penalized, and that we don't have a problem with them delaying if it's a 60 or 90-day delay in paying their first installment. But the Finance Committee of the Will County Board is meeting on Tuesday. Mike Frizzalone is the chairman of that committee, who I've addressed it to, and I've talked to Ray Tumanello, too, and I think that we should pursue our Will County board members that are on the Finance Committee to be aware of our concerns. Because if state and federal can do it, so should the county.
Does that sound well with the administration, Dr. Mitchell?
I would, I would like to invest a little bit more, but absolutely, if it's something that we as a community college can speak to, we will, we will work on that.
Maureen, when does the, when does the county board meeting?
Pardon me?
When does the county board meeting?
It's May 5th at 9:00 AM.
May 5th.
On Tuesday, May 5th.
It's next Tuesday. We get an answer by then? Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
So. Old business. Okay. Any other older in business before the board? Okay, moving on. First reading, second?
Wait, wait, wait. I want to add one more.
Yes.
Add one more. I want to give Amy Murphy a lot of credit for all of the shields and the ear, the ear savers that are going out. We have seen probably over 15,000 going out through the 3D and through laser, through all of the, a lot of the hospitals in Illinois, but we're also reaching out to other states for them to get the shields and the ear savers.
There you go. She deserves it. Any other older in business? Trustee?
I would like to thank also the College of Nursing for responding to a request for a local nursing home, and they donated masks and supplies when they were asked to. Even though it was minimal, it was very well appreciated. It increased their morale to see that the college was willing to help. I want to thank College of Nursing Dean for that also. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Morales. Any other older in business? Okay. Item seven, item eight, first and second readings of board policies. Moving on to item 9.1, JJC confirmation. Ms. Garcia, no report. Item 9.2, ICCTA, Ms. Broderick, written report that we have. Item 9.3, student trustee, Ms. Marin, no report. Item 9.4, Billis Grouse Committee, written report. Item 9.5 and 9.6, presidents and chairmen's report, no report. At this time, can I have a motion for adjournment?
No.
And a second. Motion and a second. Carl, call the rule, please. Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia, again?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Marin?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yeah.
Trustee Washington?
Yes.
And chairman Wondler?
Yes.
Please, sir.